Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. I would like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
A second. All in favor? I did. Andrew did? Okay. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now I want to go into old business. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from ten one twenty-four?
A motion to, um, top the minutes from ten twenty-one twenty-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
In regards to new business, I now call to order a public hearing to consider application CU dash zero five dash two four, which is a special exception request for the allowance of a collision center to operate in the commercial low-density C1 zone at seven seven nine West Bankhead Highway. Hello, Sean.
Good evening, everyone. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Wonderful.
I'm well. So while we go ahead and get everything adjusted, I'll shed a little bit of light, get a little intro going. So, our applicant, Preston Pennell, is seeking a special exception at seven seven nine West Bankhead Highway. Uh, this is in regards to a collision center request to operate in a commercial C1 zone.
If you unchecked, use timings.
Hit this button right here. This one, right here. Um, go to view and put one page, one slide. Or that works. Yeah.
Alright. So the applicant Preston Pennell is seeking for a special exception for the allowance of a collision center to operate in the commercial low-density C1 zone at seven seven nine West Bankhead Highway. So the site analysis is, the lot itself is fourteen point five eight acres. It is dual-zone, it is commercial, C1, which is commercial low-density, and as well as industrial medium-density I2. There is a creek that does run in the middle, near the middle of the parcel, and it flows northeast to southwest. There are multiple vacant properties or structures that are on that lot, both commercial as well as residential, mobile homes.
Can you repeat that one more time? Cause I'm just trying to understand. There's mobile homes on the lot right now?
Correct, yes, but they're vacant.
Oh, okay, okay.
This is a site plan that the applicant did provide for staff, and, uh, the proposed use collision center is permitted in both I2 and C2 zones, but for a collision center to be operated inside a C2 zone, they would have to request for a special exception permit. Uh, the applicant is proposing to develop a eighteen thousand square foot building, specifically in the two point nine acre commercial low-density area. And this is specifically where the proposed two point nine portion, where the collision center would be, uh, developed at. As you can see, the parcel as a whole is fourteen point five eight acres, and, uh, that red outlining there is where that two point nine, uh, use will be located at.
So are they only purchasing the two point nine?
Uh, they actually purchasing the whole lot as a whole. Um, they are going to develop for that two point nine acre parcel and perform a parcel split there. And, uh, they are currently shopping for, uh, I can have the applicant, um, talk a little bit more, but, uh, what he told staff is they're looking for a industrial buyer potentially to take over that, uh, rest of that eleven point eight acres.
Cause it's zoned.
It's, uh, zoned both I2 and C1. The C1 portion is specifically on, um, Highway seventy-eight. And then the back of it is, uh, I2, industrial medium-density. This is a site plan that the applicant did, or, uh, elevations at the site, elevations that the applicant provided for staff, and as well as, um, the company as itself does have a operating store in Carrollton County, or Carrollton, the city of Carrollton. Uh, as you can see on the right box, right there, the bottom right box, it is, um, connected to a Dollar Tree, and that aerial view does show what that one twenty-two collision center does look like in Carrollton currently. So based on, uh, what the applicant has provided for staff, and, uh, we reviewed everything, and we came to a conclusion that staff does recommend for approval with conditions. Uh, the reason for the approval is this use is in combination with the comprehensive plan, where it's on that Highway seventy-eight corridor, commercial corridor area. So it does align with the city's current comprehensive plan, as well as, um, the one twenty-two collision centers, staff did look, look at some, uh, research throughout the city of Georgia. They have, uh, multiple, multiple, uh, uses within the city. And based on what we have saw at, for Carrollton, Conyers, and a couple stores in Cobb County, they do resemble what we showed, showed in the previous page, where the aerial view is no, uh, when people think of a collision center, they think of something where oil is gonna be leaked everywhere, junk car is gonna be everywhere. But, uh, this applicant did allude that this is a professional collision center where they're only accept cars that need to be serviced in a specific timeframe. Get those out, and then they'll go ahead and give more cars to service. And staff did have conditions for the approval. Um, we came to a conclusion where we can make three of them. The first one is alluding to all damaged vehicles must always be delivered, kept, and serviced out of the line site, the traffic line site of Highway seventy-eight. As well as the applicant must abide by section eight point one two, uh, specifically for outdoor sales, display, and store standards, where if the applicant proposes to, uh, have any outdoor stores, that they'll have to be oriented in the back. And if they do go that route, where they'll have to have, um, maybe display, uh, some new tires or something like that, then they'll have to, um, be subject to screening standards and for review. If they want to have anything that is out of the city's or- ordinances, then they will have to go and perform a new special exception permit to allow outdoor accessory displays anywhere other than the orientation provided by, um, city ordinances. As well as, uh, the last con- condition is a lot split will be required. This will ensure that the applicant is responsible for maintaining and upkeeping the parcel as a whole, the fourteen point five eight acre parcel, and not just, uh, that small portion, two point nine portion that the collision center will be built on. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Sean?
I do. Um, on, uh, the contingent approval item number three, upkeep of the rest of the property, what will happen to... I'm guessing this is like where that old diner was?
Yes.
So what will happen to the remaining structures and things? And, I don't know, it looks like there's a driveway somewhere on it, too?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, the applicant does, or the property itself does have an open citation with codes right now involving those, uh, vacant structures that are on that property. They're hence waiting after the city council meeting, um, in November to actually go see, um, the judge in December for that ruling. Uh, we did add that condition just so they are responsible for those lots. They won't perform a parcel split and then only just worry about that two point nine acres that when December does arrive, that they will be responsible for those vacant structures.
Maybe I went clear with, um...
Who are you?
I'm Preston Pennell, sorry.
Hi, okay.
Sorry, sorry, first time doing stuff like this. But, uh, we are, um, just purchasing the two point nine acres out of the parcel, out of the fourteen acre parcel. Um, just so sorry about that, cause I was just, I thought, I thought that that was clear. And so, we're only buying the two point nine acres.
Um, well, the, the parcel itself is still as a whole, so it's still a fourteen point five eight acre parcel. So, um, you can't just, I guess, worry about that two point nine acre cause it's not parcel split as of yet.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of doing that. We have a, um, the, doing the, we're in the middle of doing that, splitting the parcel out. Because our only interest is, we have, I mean, this is our only interest is, I represent the guys at one twenty-two collision, and we wouldn't know what to do with the rest of that land. I mean, we're, our only interest is the two point nine acres to build, what we know how to build and...
So if, if that's the case, do we know, would that all fall in the commercial then? With the, the two, the, the two acres or so that you're purchasing?
So the two point nine acres, if you look, if you follow the track on like the, you see the lines going across the screen, so that line continues on. And below that is C1. Above that is your I2. So it's kind of multi, does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's kind of where the zoning comes across. So the back portion's I2, which is allowable use for the collision center, but below that, right there, is C1, which would require the conditional use permit.
This is gonna be in multiple parcels, so...
You would think...
Any discussions about interpartial connectivity?
Um, not sure. You know, at one point, when we took this over, the, uh, the back, the other, the whole of the portion was under contract, and we had this portion under contract. Since that, it has fell out of contract, but other people are interested in it. So I'm not privileged to, you know, I don't know what's current with it. I just know that, you know, all I know is about the two point nine acres and trying to get that one done. Leather's Drive?
Looking at it to the right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Leather's Drive is, goes around the right, right there, and we would improve that road. See right, so yes, on the left where the, where the blue is, the property line, that, that is a road, right there, that's Leather's Drive. Correct. So yes, so right along there. That's a driveway all the way back to the back. And the Leather's family are the ones who are selling the property. I think it may be a private drive. It's a street? It's a street? It's a street? Yeah, that's it. Some of the family are here, too, so they... In the back.
It was originally a public road that was then abandoned by the city, and it's now a private drive.
Now a private drive, okay. Gotcha. So yeah, we would continue, I mean, we would pave that back to the back of our property.
You would pave it a longer property line?
Correct. We would improve it for those guys.
Do we want to go back to Sean?
And you're asking, I'm just clarifying, you're asking because they have to have access, cause you can't land lock those properties, correct?
I think council, you should consider a condition that they provide interpartial connectivity for those other parcels.
Mm-hmm.
Would you need that to develop those lots?
Yes, yes.
Also, they would have, they would have a subdivision, so they can't have more than one of these. Uh, so you can't determine to function as one piece of the property.
If this, if this is approved, then it would have to be split.
It would have to be split, that's why we conditioned it that, that way.
Do we want to go back to Sean? For a second, or you want to go ahead and ask him questions?
Yeah.
They're gonna sell it to someone else. It could be split more.
Yeah. And then you're gonna be stuck with a unusable space.
Uh, excuse me, Commissioner, can y'all speak in the mic? Please.
So our concerns, I think, across the board are what's going to happen to the remaining parcel and its ability to be utilized functionally. It's not gonna be able to be sold, and we're scared that we're gonna be left with a abandoned mobile trailer forever and ever and ever.
Um, well, I've...
Good afternoon. Uh, my name's Luke Salls, I represent the sellers in this transaction. We actually have the entire acreage under contract. Or, I'm sorry, we actually have the entire acreage listed for sale. Mr. Pennell just has the two point nine acres for sale. Where we are splitting this property, that came out with what he needs and as well as what makes the rest of the property the most valuable. So we have retained frontage for our prime corner lot for a commercial, and then on the back, it, which is zoned entirely industrial, there is a recorded easement down Heinz Drive on the left. So they will have access to the back industrial for development, as well as on that front, on the front left. So everybody, every parcel that we are looking at would have access. We are splitting it to where the most value is gonna be brought to the community and to the sellers.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions for Sean?
And, um, I do apologize for the, the confusion. Um, I do believe that the applicant was aware that the site as a whole was, um, under discussion, even inside the, um, the public notices. It does say that the whole parcel as a whole, fourteen point five eight acres, is, uh, being looked at to have a special exception. So, um, do apologize if there was any confusion, but, uh, the parcel as a whole is being looked at, not just that two point nine acres.
Okay, so you would ask them to maintain the whole fourteen point five eight acres until December?
They're, they're asking, how, uh, staff's recommending if you approve it, you approve it with a condition that they split the parcel. Cause they can only have one use for a parcel, so if they don't split it, all you're gonna, any approval, all you're gonna have on that big tract of land is the collision center.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I guess we can hear from the applicant now?
Staff made a recommendation for approval, but one of the conditions that they're recommending is that the parcel be split.
Oh, right.
Just the way, the way you rec, the way you're wanting it split.
Oh, okay, good, yeah.
Uh, otherwise, we only allow one use per parcel, so if you don't split it,
Right.
that entire parcel is gonna be, have one little collision center in the corner, and the rest of it's gonna be vacant.
That's correct, and especially with the I2 in the back, which I became very familiar with, this has a minimum requirement of five acres for that use, that's minimum size, so in the back. But, now that's a great corner at the front, so, any other questions?
Any questions?
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Doctor, thank you.
And would anyone like, it's a public comment? Is that right, Sean?
Public hearing.
We go into public hearing?
So, anyone that wants to speak either in favor of or opposed to?
Okay. If you would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
My name's Larry Jackson. I own the, uh, two parcels next to it, which is a pawn shop now and a vacant house. I think it's, I got two just to say now, could I pass it out to you guys?
Yes.
Yeah.
This is what we're trying to get rid of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, uh, business like this needs to be in an industrial site, not on the main road where everybody can see it. But, uh, we already got an eyesore out here coming into the city for twenty-eight years, the block building, nobody's ever finished it. Then we're gonna put this down there where there'll be a bunch of cars around, and we, uh, uh, think it hurt our property there. We'd like to oppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Diane Devault, and I live at seven five...
The mic down.
There, is that better? Oh, and turn it on. Um, sorry. My name is Diane Devault, and I live at seven five five West Bankhead Highway. My previous name was Diane Leather, so I'm part of the Leather's family. I am not here in any way. I don't want to be a thorn in anybody's flesh. I certainly want my cousins to be able to sell their property. I do not want to prevent that in any way. Uh, I really think it can be an asset, uh, for the property to sell, because that means that maybe somebody might want mine, which is right next door. There is one easement. Um, at one time, that was just a private driveway between my father and, uh, and his brother, and that's all I used it for. But my father had polio, um, and I'm not gonna go into a long, long story, but they made it into a street so that my father wouldn't have to go to the mailbox and garbage and so forth up on Highway seventy-eight. It stayed a street for, I think, about forty, fifty years. Um, in two thousand fifteen, you changed it. The city of Villareca changed it into a private drive, and it was no longer a street. I don't think they wanted to keep it up. There were other issues, more issues than I can possibly bring up in three minutes. But, um, at any rate, I want the property to sell. I think that's a wonderful idea. I would just like any buyer that buys any of that property, uh, to, uh, do something, I mean, you're using my, my driveway. Uh, it's the only way I have into my home. So I would like that to become Leather Street again, and I'd like for the city of Villareca to keep that up. And I read it, really think in the end, that could, uh, help the buyers who are about to buy, and I also think it would help all of us who are left, who are still wanting to sell. Um, I represent my nieces, Carol and Karen, and I also represent my neighbor who couldn't come tonight, and I represent my two daughters who own part of my home. So I would like for us to just make some considerations here, that there are other people who would like to see the driveway, um, something done there. And, and we also, I did not know that it was gonna be divided. That's a concern, and that I don't know what's behind there. Uh, anytime there's a sale, it's going to affect my property. And we are wanting, uh, our property to sell, too. And all of us are, and we're right next door. We were part of that property. So I, I want it to sell. If you can make that all happen, that would be wonderful. To, but just consider us, that's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Joshua Evans, six forty Clifford Street, Villareca, Georgia. I guess I got it right now. So they're not getting the, the shop and the diner. They're actually getting the little parcel next to it on the right. The little garage-looking thing is, is silver. It's been there for years.
That's the pawn shop, right?
No, 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 so Pawn Shop's above that. They would be getting where JoJo Somerville had the car lot, right?
Yes.
That's pretty much right. So, we, we can all sit here and say, eyesores all over the city, and we could pick them out all day long, cause we have them. I would be asking how that's gonna work out, because now everything down through there, for some ungodly reason, is being turned to right-ins and right-outs. How, how does that, how is that gonna work with deliveries or... I mean, if you're right-in and right-out only? Cause that's, that's what everything's being changed to down through there. Um, even the new little road there that comes out from the new townhomes, they're right-in and right-out. So, I mean, I would say, how's that gonna work? I wouldn't understand that. Second, I, I would be a little bit concerned about that creek or stream, stormwater runoff, whatever they calling it now. It used to be a stream back, little creek back then, when I was a kid. Uh, I'd be worried about what kind of chemicals come off those cars if they're... I mean, I know they're saying there's nothing gonna be leaking off of them, but I guarantee if they're in a collision, something's busted somewhere, something's gonna be running off of them. So, I mean, that's just questions I think need to be asked before we just approve things. I mean, we, we was putting Scott Evans dealership through the wringer up here at a council meeting about things. So, I think all that needs to be looked at, and my main thing is that, that right-in, right-out deal, how does that, how's that gonna work? Getting a truck in and...
Sean, is the right-in, right-out, that's the DOT, correct?
I believe so.
Yes, yes, it is.
And that's, it's to prepare for the, is that to prepare for the roundabout that's gonna be at Rocky Branch?
Um, no, it's actually, the right-in, right-out is for the, um, the Embry. It's single-family attached homes are actually gonna be towards the left of the subject parcel.
So, so the reason we got all the right-in and right-outs now is because of that townhome community? And now, and now they're not even gonna, listen, they're not even gonna use that. They're gonna go right up there to Villa Trace, out that back entrance, and use it and come straight across. They're not gonna use that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Jackie Childress, ten fifty West Highway seventy-eight. Two things, one was on what Josh was talking about. That's already a traffic problem for the school, uh, in the afternoons, but now it's becoming more and more of a traffic issue. And I understand from city council that all of that's gonna make sense when the roundabout comes into play, but that may be another year, I don't know, how long down the road. I don't think anybody has really stated how long that'll be. So that's a concern. The other concern I have is that, and I'm not saying this will happen with these folks, I'm just saying typically, when you have a collision center, insurance companies decide to total a car. Well, those cars are left there for months, and sometimes the insurance companies never even pick them up. Where are those cars gonna get left? I mean, are they gonna be left there forever? Because to me, that would be an unsightly thing for the new development that's going on at the top... on at the top of the hill. It would be an infestation of rodents and runoffs and everything else. So, I'd like for that to be addressed when you take this into consideration also, as to, in the likelihood that there are cars that are abandoned there, what do the developers and the owners plan to do with those cars? And how long are they going to be allowed to sit there? And those kind of things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can the applicant answer that?
Cars are, you know, they're quickly, I mean, they're easy to be, you know, told right when they have a wreck, if they're, if they're not drivable. Most of, most of the ones that come to the collision center, probably like 80% of them are still drivable. These are like small dents, stuff like that. I mean, ones that are wrecked, you know, they're quickly, I mean, quick, quick, quick to total a car. The cars that are coming in here are the ones that are, you know, that are drivable, that you see people with kind of, you know, banged up stuff. I mean, these, they do not let cars sit on the lot, and if we want to put that as part of like the exemption or variance or whatever, that if they're sitting there, they're not doing anything for you, they're quickly towed off to a yard, which is, will gladly come pick it up and use it for parts.
Will there, will there be a fenced-in area for the cars?
Yes, it'll be, per insurance, it makes the fence in there is, yeah, screened, completely screened in. You will not see any cars, except the people who are visiting coming in the front door.
And cars will be delivered and kept out of traffic line site of Highway 78?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Well, to address, sorry, to address the, the stormwater runoff catches everything that would come from the side off of the creek, before it even gets to the creek. But all this facility, this company is green, so it's all water solvent sprays and stuff to that nature, and so the chemical stuff is minimal, if any.
Do you have any other questions? Anyone for Sean or the applicant?
I would, I'm glad he said that I had a question about the stormwater facility. Do we have any more details on that?
Go ahead.
That this stormwater facility, could you just repeat what you said?
So, yeah, so we would do, I mean, for Georgia, and you've got to do, you've got it right there.
Yeah, so this right here is a stormwater runoff. This pulls everything that comes off of the property would be caught right here. And so, that's just kind of, you know, any new development, you've got to, you've got to maintain or retain all your, all the water coming off the site. So, it would not go, even though the creek is there, that's why we only really need like two acres to do this site, but this is 2.9 because we have that buffer from the creek to catch all that water before it goes to the creek.
And would the owner, the builder, be willing to pave and maintain the road that lines up with your, the property you're going to purchase, the 2.9 acres?
Yeah, we're looking to pave this right here, Leather's Drive. Yes, we would pave that all the way back to where there is now. I think there's a gate or something, there's something right here. Yes, we would pave that all the way back.
So, that would give them access, would that give you access to your...
It looks like it gives you access to one of the parcels, but it doesn't look like it gives you access to the top parcel.
If you could, if you would. It could if you would.
So, he's only willing to pave the 2 point...
Right in front of his.
Yes.
Right.
That lines up with his property, so then it would be after your paved portion, it would be dirt road.
Well, right now, it's a pretty dirt road with a lot of erosion, even halfway through that, all the way through that.
Would have nothing.
Has nothing, and this could be a fence here.
Right.
So, they could lose access.
Right.
Well, no, I mean, we would put a fence. I think there's existing something where a fence is. I was just trying to give a reference. I've driven back there. I mean, that's the road that, you know, I've driven all the way back. So, we would just pave it up to the point, or even to that point, you know, there's plenty of erosion, this dirt road. I mean, we would make sure it's nicely paved.
Can we add that as a condition for approval? That they pave and maintain that portion of land of the road?
Yeah.
May I add something?
Can you come up to the mic, because people online need to be able to hear it?
To answer your question, you can put conditions on any, anytime you're requested to approve a special exception, you're allowed to put conditions on that.
Okay.
I think you are legally, at one time, we sold our property, but we could not finish that sale because it was an easement. Y'all had just changed it from a street into a private drive, and so we could no longer sell. And, and we could not work that out, so we lost our, our sale because of that. The attorney told us that at that time, it was an easement, it was illegal unless you turn it back into a street again. That's the only, as long as it's a private driveway, that I think you must make that as a consideration, or maybe a mandate. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how all of that will work. I think if these people are willing to pave that driveway, because it's in horrible condition, it, it looks like you're going to turn right, right into the middle of hell. That's, that's exactly the way it looks, and of course, they've got to come to my house that way. I don't have the personal money to fix the driveway. So, I would love to see that back into a street. I would love to see it all the way up. I wouldn't even mind coming out my driveway, turning right, going that way, going that way. I, I would do all of that in order to work with all of this, as long as he, he's willing to do that. Now, the appearance of how it's going to look from our side, I don't know. That's something too. But anyway, I think you're going to have to do something about the driveway.
Right. Thank you.
So, I, I see what he's saying with the stormwater runoff with the retention pond. Now, we did, over off of 61, well, Industrial Boulevard, they, they came in and had an applicant for a trailer, truck, trailer parking that was going to be gravel. And one of those conditions was because of what comes off of them, they're afraid of what comes off of them. Could that also be the same condition here and make them do a bio-retention pond instead of a regular retention pond? Make it be a bio-retention pond?
I'm not an engineer.
I know.
I can't tell you what the difference is. I mean, as far as the drive goes, I mean, you can't put conditions on there that, it looks like their plan is to pave and gutter, if you look at the plan, that, that's got paving and gutters, curbing gutters. I don't know that that ever becomes a city street unless it's...
What do you do to make it a city street?
Well, it'd have to be built to city street standards, and that's, I don't know how wide that is, if that's going to meet the standards. But it's got to be built to the city's standards, and if it is, then the city could consider, I mean, council would have to approve making it a city street, and then if, at that point, the city will maintain it.
Would that require a survey?
Oh, yes. Survey engineering.
How quick, how quickly we'd have to table this, I assume?
Yeah. And we, I don't anticipate we would build a street just for that.
Collision center.
Yeah. I, I think the way that comes into play is maybe with a developer of the bigger parcel, of the industrial parcel. I could foresee an, a development agreement coming out of that, where he builds to certain standards, and if he does, then the city agrees to adopt the street. But I don't see it happening with this little parcel.
Right.
Right. So, I talked, talking with the applicant, they're willing to, to build that street to the back point of their property there to, so that they would still have access to your properties, to the city's specifications, and then apply for the city to take it to council. We would. All this would be in the engineering part, that when they submit their civil engineering, they would have the road, the standards. Our engineer would look over that. They would have to meet everything. We would go out and do the tests, the proof rolls and all that, and then the, correct, the council would have to vote on adopting that street. So, you could put that as a, you know, contingency in this if you want, couldn't they, if they wanted to move forward?
He built his portion to the...
If he built his portion to that.
To the street stand, city street standards?
Yeah, and then, then we could take that to council and have them adopt that, that street. Either way, even if the city didn't adopt it, I mean, you would still have a street for the back of your property. And then, you know, I mean, we can't speak for the council, but, you know, if we build a fine road there and it, and it benefits everybody else, it's a good sale.
Are they agreeing to build it all the way back, or just to...
Just the 2.9 acres.
Can I come up there?
Yeah, that'll help.
Is it just along this property line, correct?
Right, so, we've got it showing building to here, but we talked about building it all the way back to this point where it does not land lot these homeowners right here. And then whoever buys this, you know, we could put that in the stipulations if there needs to be more road, they would have to extend that, but we, he's only worried about his 2.9 acre right here.
Right.
And giving that, this is kind of irrelevant now if he would build that strip back, in my opinion. I think it will be...
So, he'd be building it the full length of the 2.9 acre track.
Is that, you can come back up and speak for that.
I mean, if that's what we need to do, I mean, if that, you know, but I don't know if that achieves what, you know, ultimately, I guess you got to go to city council and see if they'll approve the road. So, yeah, well, I mean, we're willing to work with it. We want this to be a win-win for everybody.
But in order...
Right.
But let me ask a clarifying question. What I heard Kevin say is it has to be built to city standards to even be considered into a road. So...
When he was, submits his civil plans for review, that's when our engineer will look at that and say, yes, this meets his, and they'll look, their, their engineers will look at our standards, our road design standards, and then they'll, they'll put that on their civil drawings, and then our engineer will review that and make sure that, that meets his standards. That's the standard.
Yeah, what, what you're seeing here is just a preliminary plan. They don't do much beyond this until they know they've got approval, because they're going to have to go and see if there's rock. You know, they may have to move things around because of topography or soil conditions, all kind of things.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, this is all preliminary stuff. I mean, we want to make sure we talk to you guys before we spend money. I mean, naturally, you just don't want to...
I have another question.
Okay.
So, if you're not going to build where the Ruby's Diner is, are you guys going to tear that down?
You know, I, I'm only interested in the 2.9 acres.
Okay.
So, I have nothing to do. Luke Salls has listed that, and I've made an offer, LOI, just to peel out the 2.9 acres.
The 2.9 acres.
But granted, I've got to go do the, I've got to do a survey on the whole 14 acres right now to be able to peel that out. So, that's kind of where I am now. So, I have nothing to do with Ruby's Diner.
Yeah, and Sean had mentioned in his statement that there was a pending case related to that, and what, what he was referring to is someone started to demolish that building without a permit. So, they got a citation. That case was continued, hopefully so they get the rights permits to legally demolish the building. I mean, that's, that's the city's hope, so...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I have another question. So, can the parcel be subdivided until that case is closed?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that won't have any bearing on this at all.
Yes, Mr. Jackson?
Well, yeah.
You'd have to come up to the mic, please.
If you guys approve all this, will the streets be curbed and gutted and have the, to control the water?
They would be built to city standards.
Is that what, is that what, curb and gutter?
I think so. Is that correct?
Yes.
Curb and gutter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone like to make a motion for approval or denial?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve with that added condition.
With all the conditions that are already one through three, and add a condition to pave and maintain Leather's Road along the 2.9 acres to city street standards?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Only condition three? You know, I think Sean is, I don't, I don't like...
Right, so we could remove lot, condition three, because they're not going to maintain or...
Correct. Yeah, we have nothing to do with that. I'm sorry. Wish I, wish I did.
So, we want to make a motion to approve with conditions one and two, an additional third condition to pave and maintain to city standards, the road formerly known as Leather's Road alongside the 2.9 acre boundary line.
Yeah.
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Any discussion first, and then...
Oh, any discussion.
Between just you at this point.
Yeah.
And then not...
Do you have anything to do?
I think I'm good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're ready to adjourn? I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah.